All right, call to order the meeting of the Planning Commission for the City of Oregon City, uh, on the June 26th, 2023.
Chair Stoll.
Yes.
Can you hold on just one second? We have to record and then.
Okay.
And then start that whole thing all over.
Recording in progress.
Okay, call to order the, uh, Planning Commission meeting for the City of Oregon City, June 26th, 2023. Uh, we'll start off with, uh, roll call.
Commissioner LaSalle.
Here.
Commissioner Stegs, excused absence. Commissioner West, excused absence. Commissioner Laws.
Here.
Commissioner Espy. Vice Chair Schlagenhoffer.
Here.
Chair Stoll.
Here. Uh, move on to public comment, four items not on the agenda. Do we have any comments from anyone in the audience or online?
I believe everyone is for the item on.
Okay, sounds good. All right, well, we'll get on with the script. Uh... Public hearings on land use applications are scheduled for tonight. Our role is to conduct the public hearing and to make decisions about the matter before us. In making those decisions, we must apply the applicable codes and laws and cannot vary from or change those laws or codes. A staff report has been prepared for each application and has been made available to the public seven days before the first public hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to each applicant's proposal. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report. The hearing procedure that the Planning Commission will follow is set out in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure steps are shown on the Planning Commission website and on the wall over there. Public testimony will be called on in the order it was requested. If you wish to testify in person, please fill out a speaker card available at the back of the room. If you wish to testify virtually, you will be called either from a request to speak emailed to city staff at planning@orcity.org in advance of this meeting or by raising your virtual or physical hand when I ask if there are others in the audience who would like to participate. For the public record, please begin all testimonies stating your name and city of residence. If you'd like to receive a copy of the notice of decision, please state your mailing address or email address. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria and explain how and why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. Any person may submit written material while the public record is open on each application. Any written materials received by the city staff during the time period in which the record is open will be placed in the record. Written materials submitted during the public hearing must be presented to the city staff in order to become part of the record. If a person attends for PowerPoint presentations, reports, pictures, or other exhibits used in their oral testimony, to be placed in the record, copies must be submitted to the city staff while the record is open. If they are not given to staff, they will not be included in the record. Any person wishing a continuance to present additional evidence and testimony or to keep the record open to respond to new evidence must make that request before the public testimony portion of the initial hearing is closed. If the Planning Commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue that you may wish to appeal must have been raised before the Planning Commission in order to be considered to by the City Commission and in the event of further appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient detail and accompanied by statements or evidence allowing the city and all parties to respond, the issue will not be considered on appeal. In addition to participating orally or in writing and raising all issues during the Planning Commission proceeding, the filing of an appeals must include the required fee. A city-recognized neighborhood association may request waiver of an appeal fee subject to the requirements of fourth and Oregon City Municipal Code 17.50.19C5 and 17.50.29C. In addition, the failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient detail to allow the local government or its designated to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Now, we'll open the record for Oregon City, file number GLUA 23-00012 and MAS 23-00001, Clackamette Park Master Plan, General Development Plan. Members of the Planning Commission are to be unbiased. As a result, I will call on each commissioner to disclose any potential conflicts such as family, financial, or business relationships with any of the applicants or with regard to the landing question. I will also ask whether any of the Planning Commissioners have discussed the application in question with any of the parties or have independent knowledge of relevant facts such as from a visit to the site. Any member of the audience may question any Planning Commissioner about their disclosures. At this point, does any commissioner have any conflicts of interest, expertise, contact, bias, or other statements to declare or have visited the site? If there was a site visit, the Planning Commission Commissioner must declare what he or she perceived. Start with Commissioner LaSalle.
Uh, no expertise contact, no bias, no conflict of interest. I've visited the site quite often.
Mr. Schlagenhoffer.
Um, I have no conflicts of interest, uh, no bias. I have had no expertise contact about this application. I did not visit the site recently, but I've been there many times. I know most of it very well.
Commissioner Laws.
I have no expertise contact, no conflict of interest. I have been going to the site since I was like four years old, so I've been, my dad was a fisherman, so that's the only, I've been, and I've gone there recently as the holidays, but not since this was, you know, presented to us, so.
Commissioner Espy.
No expertise contact, conflicts, or bias.
And I have no expertise contact, no conflicts of interest, no bias. Um, I've also visited the site from time to time over the years, and I made a drive through the parking lot, uh, today. Um, I did notice that there was one RV dumping at the weigh station and another one waiting in line, and also that the river, uh, is basically a rapid right in front of the existing boat ramp today. Uh, does anyone in the audience wish to question any of the Planning Commissioners about these disclosures? Okay, all right, we'll move on with the staff report.
Thank you, Chair Stoll, and good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Pete Walter, and I'm the Planning Manager for the Planning Division, uh, City of Oregon City Community Development Department. This evening, um, I will be presenting a short PowerPoint. And the file numbers for this land use application are GLUA, uh, 23-12 and MAS, that's Master Plan, 23-1. Uh, this is a general development plan application for, uh, Clackamette Park. My, let's see, this heated up. My goals this evening are to summarize the proposed master plan for you, uh, provide an overview of the approval process, uh, briefly summarize the relevant approval criteria and findings, discuss, uh, some recommended conditions of approval that we might be adding, um, and then, um, we will be deliberating. Um, I am also going to explain, um, something about the process that has come up to light as of this morning, and it should be fairly clear once, once we do that. First, I will give you an overview of the current conditions at the park. Oh, there it goes. Now I got control, okay. Is that the existing conditions plan? I think that's the other PowerPoint you got up there, Kay. The older one. We want the one that says new. I can probably work with, uh...
It might take us a minute.
Yeah. Pardon?
It might take us a minute to get to the.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll wing it until the new one comes up. Um, so currently it's a 25-acre park and situated at the confluence of the Willamette and Clackamas Rivers. Um, it's Oregon City's only designated regional park and subsequently gets heavy use from not just folks from Oregon City, but throughout the region. Uh, current facilities include the RV park, playgrounds, shelters, horseshoe pits, picnic areas, boat ramp, skate park, RV dump station, pathways, restroom building, and parking facilities for cars and vehicles with boat trailers. Let's see. Um, overview of the proposal will be to reorient the main entry from Clackamette Drive directly into the site. Uh, there are going to be a lot of pedestrian and vehicle circulation changes. There are several new parking areas. The, uh, current boat launch would be moved further to the south, um, and that would be the motorized boat launch facility, and the existing boat launch would become a non-motorized boat launch. Um, there will be a new play area and large flexible open lawn spaces. The RV park is proposed to be relocated, uh, relocated out of its current location next to the river, um, across Clackamette River Drive to two lots that are city-owned. In my staff report on page eight, I say that these lots are owned by the Urban Renewal Commission. That's incorrect. They are owned by the city, but not by the Urban Renewal Agency. Um, and I'll briefly talk about that. The, uh, as the, um, was pointed out this morning, the proposal for an RV park in the mixed-use downtown zone, um, uh, that creates a issue of zoning where RV parks are not listed as a permitted, conditional, or prohibited use. It's just completely silent in the zoning code. So, um, staff is planning to draft a condition of approval that, um, the two city-owned lots be rezoned to I-institutional. Um, and also that a text amendment to the zoning code to allow RV parks in the institutional zone, um, that would have to occur, and a comprehensive plan map amendment will need to happen as well to change the long-range land use designation of those two lots from mixed use to public to accommodate the institutional use. That process is a type four, uh, process requiring Planning Commission and City Commission approval, and we're going to need to draft a condition of approval in such a way that if that process doesn't, uh, uh, is not approved, then the applicant would need to come back and either amend the master plan or remove those two properties from the master plan boundary. So, um, that's the approach that we are going to recommend, um, and we will craft a condition of approval that deals with that, uh, for your review at a subsequent meeting. Um, but tonight I did want to get through the majority of the other findings in the staff report and, uh, and get to, uh, get to, uh, the point of questions. Um, additional facilities that would be included in the expanded park is an upgraded restroom, expanded skate park, sport courts, art installations, and, um, extensive habitat restoration that includes plantings of native trees, shrubs, and ground cover. Do we have the more current presentation up yet? Okay. Okay. I will briefly go into the transportation improvements. So both, uh, Main Street and Clackamette Drive are collector-level roads. They will require upgrading to collector-level street standards when the detailed development plan is proposed. Um, there are going to be two new, uh, what are called continental-style crosswalks. Actually, I've got a better close-up of this. You can see, uh, vaguely where those are, but they coming in from the property across the street to the site. Um, and essentially they're going to slow speeds down on this street. It's currently a curve, um, fairly high speeds, and this should reduce, uh, some conflicts with traffic and that sort of thing. Oh. Yeah, sure, I'll wait.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
While we're waiting, I just had a question. Uh, is the RV aspect of the park the only thing that's being snagged by the, uh, mixed-use zoning or?
Um, as I anticipated, yes. Um, there is some over, some additional parking proposed on that site, um, which would be associated with the park use, um, which is permitted in, in, in most zones. You can have associated parking.
Okay, and then how, how long is a zoning change, like a type-four zoning change in the entire process? How long does that take?
Um, the, uh, it's the, subject to the 120-day land use rules as well. So based on a completed application, um, we would, uh, set a Planning Commission public hearing probably within 30 to 45 days, um, followed by a City Commission hearing. Um, and, uh, we would issue a decision within that timeframe. Um, and I don't know at this point how that affects the subsequent detailed development plan for, that would be submitted, but perhaps the.
And that's, I was wondering, would that process have to be completed before we could approve this, the, the master plan?
As proposed, it would, um, yes. Um, the alternatives which the applicant could pursue are the ones I already mentioned. You know, they could, um, amend the master plan or remove the two lots from the boundary.
All right, thank you.
Are we, are we good? Let's see. Great. So, uh, this is the slide to illustrate the land use process. Uh, currently we're at the general development sta, plan stage, which is on the left with, um, this is a type-three review. Um, we'd be recommending approval with conditions. Um, next, we would, uh, deal with the two city-owned lots through the zone change, comprehensive plan amendment process, and a zoning code amendment. Um, and that would be, uh, done prior to any further land use approval on tax lots 601 and 500, which are the two city-owned lots. Uh, following that, there would be, uh, subsequent phases of the master plan coming in as either type-one or type-two reviews as a detailed development plan. Some of them are potentially optional for type-one minor site plan, which is a type-one process. Um, currently with this proposal, the applicant has not proposed any adjustments or modifications to any zoning code criteria. However, in the future, if they are proposing modifications, they may need to come back to the Planning Commission to get those approved through an amendment to this master plan. Um, yes.
So right now you're not proposing any text changes? You're just doing the map changes and then.
Right now, we.
Text changes.
The, uh, the zone change, comp plan, and map and code amendment process is something brand-new that came up today that we are talking about right now. It wasn't in the staff report. It wasn't anticipated until Chair Stoll rightly pointed it out in an email to staff this morning, so. Um, and following that, um, site development can occur with building permits or construction permits.
I, I guess I would take a look at the code and see if there's any code changes that you need to do that you could take care of now, too.
There are a few out there, yes.
Yeah, I mean, related to the, related to the master plan.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point. We'll need to take stock of what makes sense to include in a, in a, in a zoning amendment process and then try to make that as efficient as possible.
Right.
Thank you.
Um, that, um, the property is currently owned by the Urban Renewal.
No, it's owned by, it's not owned by the Urban Renewal Agency. That was a error in the staff report on page eight. So it's, uh, city-owned, but not Urban Renewal. Uh, transportation, transportation impacts. So with the proposal, there will be an increase in parking spaces. Uh, automobile spaces are going from 75 to 90. Boat trailers, spaces from 46 to 61. RVs from an unknown number to 18. Um, this results in a net additional 198 new vehicle trips, uh, eight weekday morning peak hour trips, and 18 weekday, uh, evening peak hour trips. Um, the expansion of the existing public park space will result in a slight increase in, in trips. Relocating and reopening the boat ramp with expanded parking will cause an increase in trips. Um, expansion of basketball and the skateboard court, uh, could increase trips, whereas the, uh, reduced RV park sites and removal of the RV waste dump itself, um, would be a slight decrease in trips. However, on balance, these changes are expected to result in an overall increase in site trip generation. Uh, vehicle access, um, will be, uh, a little more, uh, directed with this proposal. Um, there will be a eastern one-way ingress on Main Street, uh, into the parking lot, and a two-way northern driveway from Clackamette Drive. You can see between the numbers one and nine on that slide, um, which will be a two-way driveway. Um, the southern access to the, uh, parking lot and RV park on the east side of Clackamette Drive there will be shifted to the edge of the property to maximize its spacing from Main Street. And the south access is proposed as egress-only, similar to the existing, existing McDonald's, uh, egress that operates as exit-only today. Both these accesses are anticipated to satisfy site distance requirements, and these exit-only accesses result in fewer potential conflict points between the two driveways as compared to full-movement driveways for which there is a 100-foot standard, uh, spacing. Both driveways are anticipated to be stop-controlled, which means that drivers exiting each one will have time to observe a vehicle leaving the other driveway and interact appropriately. I was going to review, uh, the overlay districts that are in effect on the property. Um, the, uh, park is 100% within the 100-year floodplain and, um, the, is regulated by the Flood Management Overlay District. Um, it is also 100% in the Natural Resources Overlay District. Um, so a lot of the uses that are currently in the park are permitted to continue under the Natural Resource Overlay District Code, but the, uh, code does regulate, um, new impervious surfaces and impacts to the corridor. Um, at this point, uh, this is a conceptual plan, so we don't have, uh, full idea of where all the impacts are to the existing vegetative corridor. It is a, you know, a park that's been used for a long time, and it predated the Natural Resource Overlay District. Um, so a significant amount of, uh, time and energy is going to go towards actually improving the vegetative corridor in the park and removing a lot of impervious surface, replanting with native plants and trees, especially along the shoreline, to improve the habitat and, uh, water quality functions of the Natural Resources Overlay District. Um, the park is also within the Willamette River Greenway Overlay District, which is, uh, uh, one of the older overlay districts imposed by the State of Oregon to protect the Willamette River. River. And a compatibility review is required in the Willamette River Greenway for new uses. Park and recreation uses are considered exceptions within the Willamette River Greenway because that's a compatible use within the Greenway that the Greenway anticipates and will continue. That said, we do what are called a type 1 minor site plans when new structures are proposed within the Greenway. We have a type 1 compatibility review process that we can use. And if any impacts that we did not anticipate affect the Greenway for compatibility reasons, we would be coming back to you with findings for that. But as proposed, we have already made a finding that this is compatible with the Greenway. The general development plan approval are listed here. The general development plan is a flexible process through which an applicant can request adjustments to the development code. They have not chosen to do that at this time. Development must demonstrate compliance with our Public Facilities chapters of the code. We need to be able to provide public services and facilities to serve the uses. It must adequately protect any inventoried natural, historic, or cultural resources within the boundary. That is principally done through the overlay district reviews. And the general development plan must mitigate for any impacts that are identified for each phase of development. It must be consistent with the Oregon City Comprehensive Plan and any underlying zone And at the time of detailed development plan approval, the chapters listed here would all come to bear in more detail. And I won't read these, but they are listed in your staff report. Briefly wanted to let you know that the Natural Resources Committee did review this at their last meeting. As an advisory body to the city, they are allowed under their bylaws to comment on land use applications within the Natural Resource Overlay District. And ones that potentially can impact the Natural Resources Overlay District. And the NRC had the following comments. They recommended adding more native trees in the southwest area of the park to mitigate and protect against flooding and erosion. They wanted to place a greater emphasis on the preservation of mature native existing trees within the park to improve perching, hunting, and nesting habitat for birds along the river. Improving habitat by minimizing the use of expansive lawn areas, especially close to the river, and instead plant more large native trees and shrubs that would be typically found in a riparian corridor. And they also felt that the park should have a dedicated transit stop specifically for the new Oregon City Connector Shuttle Service and give due consideration to add additional transit options and stops to encourage visitors even during full parking lot situations. And then finally, recommending adding more growing space for mature trees in the parking lot areas and RV areas to provide shade. The RV park, as I've mentioned, is zoned mixed-use downtown currently, and that is regulated by Chapter 1734 of the city code. And RV parks are not listed as permitted, conditional, or prohibited in that zone. Subsequently, staff will be writing a condition of approval that requires a comprehensive plan amendment, a rezoning, and a text amendment to the I Institutional Zoning Code to allow RV park use. And as we've mentioned before, that will be a condition that we would write in such a way so that if that process does not complete and is not approved, then the main park use could potentially still be approved without the RV park in it. But that would require an amendment to the approved plan. And I had that slide up again in case we need to refer back to it. So our staff recommendation this evening is to continue the public hearing for GLUA 2312, MAS 2301, to July 10, 2023, with the record open. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
All right, thank you. So we'll start. Mr. LaSalle for questions?
Yes, sir. Can you tell us what the grand purpose of this plan is?
Well, I would be happy to defer to the Parks Department on that. They've done a lot of public outreach and have a real clear idea of what the public has said to them in their outreach process. From a planning perspective, this is a park that's been in use for a long time, and it's getting a lot of pressure, and it will get a lot more pressure in the future because it's a regional park. On top of that, there have been plans in the works for a long time to renovate certain uses in the park. And because this park is over 10 acres in size, it is required to have a general development plan in order for any subsequent development to be approved. So that's what we're looking at tonight. And so really, this is a big-picture conceptual plan, trying to focus in on what the overlay district regulations are going to be and what the main improvements are going to be. But generally, it looks like it meets the criteria for approval of a general development plan. We have some limited conditions of approval right now. We're going to amend those to include this zone change condition that we talked about. And...
Do you have any idea of what the cost will be? And are there any grants that you see in the foreseeable future?
I do not know any of those answers, but I would leave it to the applicant to answer that.
The new boat ramp, do we have assurances that it won't be subject to the same geologic problems as the old boat ramp?
There's probably some structural engineering that needs to be done. The boat ramp falls within the geologic hazard overlay zone because the banks of the river are over 25%. So there'll be significant amount of review, both at the land use level and at the permitting level. And I would assume there's quite a bit of hydrologic study that needs to be done to assure that that is a safe ramp. But I would defer to the applicant on the details.
On page 10, the Natural Resource Committee made several recommendations. Have those been followed?
I believe it's... The NRC can make comments and recommendations, but they cannot make those conditions of approval. So if the planning commission decides upon deliberation that some of those recommendations or comments should be followed, it would be up to the planning commission to make those conditions of approval.
What kind of landscaping is planned for the former RV site?
Could you repeat the question, please?
What kind of landscaping is planned for the former RV site?
The former RV site?
It's the present site now, but it would be...
Okay, yeah. I believe, looking at the site plan, a portion of that area is going to be expanded lawn. But in general, there's going to be some native shrubs and trees planted in there. The application does include an inventory of all the trees on site, like just under 500 trees now, but there'll be additional trees being planted with the subsequent plans. The NRC's comment was to try to minimize the amount of lawn area for habitat reasons. But I explained on the record to the NRC that obviously this plan represents a balance between recreational uses that have been there for a very long time and improvements to the habitat values of that site as well.
Along the riverbank, it has... I call it rip rap. I don't know if that's correct. Will that remain there like that?
I don't know the answer to that question, but yeah, that's... At this point, there's a lot of refinement left to be done, I think, in that regard.
Page 56, it references OCMC 13.12.080, and it states, "The findings are not applicable. Construction activities are not proposed." But what do you call a new boat ramp? Parking an RV park other than new construction?
Well, this is the general development plan, so it's not actually proposing development at this stage. In order for actual construction to be happening, there first needs to be a detailed development plan approved. And this is just the first step.
Okay. Let's see here. I would hope that we could try to get some help from the State Marine Board on that new boat ramp. The RV dump site has been eliminated.
That's what I understand, yes.
Well, to me, as a former RVer, that doesn't make any sense. There should be a dump site. Does anybody have any idea where the nearest dump site would be?
It's a good question, and I would defer to the applicant on that one. I don't know.
They really need that. Let's see here. On your map, there's some little brown squares.
Which map?
On the map, there's some little brown squares on the paths with a black dot in the middle of them. What are those?
This map?
Yeah, yeah, that's it. Like, just to the right of number 13 and the path there, there's a little... There's a square with a black dot. Yeah, what does that represent? Because there's a few of them spread out.
I do not know what that represents. We should defer to the applicant on that one.
There are several pages of tree inventory. What is to be done with the dead trees and the trees in poor condition?
Well, I think there's always ongoing maintenance at the park. You know, trees are... There are some dead trees indicated on that inventory, and the applicant is permitted to apply for tree removal permits within the N-Rod through a type 1 process. And we do require replacement. But at this stage, we don't have the exact location of the detailed development plan improvements, so we don't know whether all of the trees that are inventoried are going to be affected by that or not. I think we'll ask for refinement of that when we have the detailed development plan. The Natural Resource Overlay District requires that all species of trees to be replanted in this overlay be native species. So that's going to be a challenge in some respects, but, you know, they would be putting together a detailed landscaping plan and tree removal and mitigation plan at the time of detailed development plan application.
I would hope for safety reasons that they be sure to plan on getting rid of all those dead trees.
Yeah.
Just for safety alone.
Yeah.
Now, I noticed... I just thought of it tonight. I would suggest that a crosswalk from Dune Drive be placed there, right at where McDonald's is, into the park? Or maybe a crosswalk into the park from the south end of the RV park. Some kind of a crosswalk in that area probably should be considered. And that's all the questions I have.
Thank you. Vice Chair Slough, any questions? I have a couple. One of them, Commissioner LaSalle has already discussed, but I agree 100%. If we're going to get rid of the pump station, people need an alternate solution. I worry that if we don't give them a good place to put their sewage, they're going to find another place to put their sewage. So I understand that they're putting the... They're going to be giving RVs hookups. And right now, they don't have hookups. And so the system that we had was somebody uses the RV park, then when they pack up to leave, they dump their sewage and leave because there was no hookup. Okay, so that works for the people using the RV park, but I think Oregon City is well-known for as a place to dump after, like, the holidays. And I've used it myself. It gets very busy, and I have no idea where to go if that pump station closes, that dump station. So instead of closing it, how about a pay dump station? I mean, I feel like there may be some opportunity that we're missing. If the decision has been made, then, well, at least I had my say in it. The other thing, going back to the RV park and the zoning being wrong, as far as moving it. So I saw that changing the zoning to institutional isn't all that's required. We also need to add some text to making it an allowed use.
Yeah, so currently...
So institutional zoning doesn't allow RV parks?
It does not currently, no.
Is our current RV park then not legal?
It's pre-existing, non-conforming in the site that it's in.
Not in a code enforcement situation?
No, we're not.
Parks?
No. You know, this is moving the... You know, moving it away from the wherever accomplishes several things in terms of the overlay districts, certainly. There's a lot of information potentially that needs to be added into the record about the decision-making process about the RV park. From a zoning perspective, currently, that site is... Has a comprehensive plan designation of mixed-use downtown, and a zoning as mixed-use downtown. So that would need to change to accommodate, along with a text amendment for RV parks in institutional zones, that change would need to occur. And as I pointed out, that's a separate type 4 process that needs to dovetail with this.
Right. If we weren't moving the RV park, would we still have to add RV parks to the zoning for institutional?
If I could interrupt and help answer that question. We've been trying to dig into this question today, and there is some code elsewhere where it talks about public parks and... it talks about public parks and camping. And where it talks about camping being prohibited, it actually has an allowance for, other than areas approved by the city for the permitted use and built for the purpose of campgrounds or overnight parks. So, there's a carve-out in Chapter 12.16 that talks about public parks that has allowed it, to allow the camping in the RV park to be in Clackamas Park, so that's...
Does it specify a specific zone, zoning?
No, because it doesn't, no, it doesn't specify a specific zone, so...
Okay. Interesting. Okay, that was it, thank you. Commissioner LaSalle?
A few things. One thing I noticed, Commissioner LaSalle was talking about crosswalks. I also think that maybe it would be important to consider one on Main Street towards, like, the Starbucks area or, you know, kind of the edge of the park, because there's a lot of people who try to cross there as well. The other thing I was going to mention is I like that the NRC is involved in this. I would really like to see a lot of their recommendations be made. A few questions I have, is there wetland plants out the edge of the banks planned in any case?
Are there wetland plants?
Like wetland plants, like certain particular ones that do really well if water rises?
Good question, yeah. The landscape architects will probably need to choose a palette of native plants that can, you know, withstand periodic flooding. That is, was something that the NRC was wondering about as well. So, yeah, it's a dynamic situation. The flooding can scour that site completely, and we have to go back in and replant that kind of thing and just deal with it. But, you know, a lot of the proposed plantings that we anticipate in the detailed development plan would be considered enhancements to the Natural Resource Overlay District.
As I look at...
Maybe not wetland plants, but maybe there are things that are, can survive that scouring, yeah.
I look at sustainability, you know, if eventually this park's going to, at least the water's going to rise, is that the least amount of expense on the city is possible in terms of, you know, because the grassy areas are just going to get destroyed if water rises. The other thing as well that I wanted to mention is I would like to see a lot more bigger trees. I saw there's like a pin oak in there, and it'd be fun to kind of like look at what the possibilities are and get a little bit more creative in terms of having larger need of trees. I have a question, and this may be for Kendall eventually. How much of an expense of maintenance will this park cost parks in terms of, you know, additional maintenance? Because this park's not really, there's been a certain amount, but not as much as what's going to be needed. Is there a figure on how much more this is going to cost the city to maintain?
Commissioner, ask me? Any questions?
So, I echo Carla's comments on the vegetation and the hydrologic regime of that area and compatibility of the type of vegetation you'd want to use at the riverbank. The only thing that I would add is that, you know, you might want to maybe carve out some areas to allow people, if they want to, you know, do some fishing or something like that, so that those kinds of things don't naturally end up getting trampled down, you know, later on or whatever. The other thing is, you know, that there are a lot of older trees there that, you know, have tendency to topple over every year. And maybe just taking a good look at the plant palettes and addressing the emergent vegetation and what kind of vegetation would be the most compatible for that type of area. Those would be the things that I would want to emphasize, make sure that that was, there's some really good opportunities down there for a park that would be really cool. And the only other question that I had was, I know you have a little trail along the river's edge, is there, has there any, been any discussion? I thought there was discussion about having connectivity between, like, John Storm Park and then, you know, ultimately, you know, with points north. And I was just wondering if there was any thought towards that? And if there is, maybe there should be.
You mean in terms of a more regional trail connection?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't really address that in the staff report, but I would definitely look at it and update that.
I just thought it'd be kind of, yeah, I think it'd be great, you know, to have something like that.
Thank you.
Sure.
I have one other question in terms of security, in terms of, you know, police ma, you know, monitoring the area. We've seen a lot more, obviously, drug use period, and this would be very appealing, even renovated, for people to possibly, how many, do we have a plan about police monitoring the park?
That's not something that I address in the zoning review, but it's certainly something that we can add into the record, and I defer to the applicant on a response there.
All right. I had a couple of questions. Want to echo what's been said about the RV dump. I've used it, it's a great place on a Sunday afternoon on the way home to use before I park my trailer for months and months in my driveway. It is often used, there's been a line every time I've gone. I'd like to see either the public dump replaced or a guarantee of full hookups at the site, either one or both preferably. Question regarding the zoning change and the text amendment, is there anywhere else in the city, any other zoning that allows for an RV park?
Not for overnight camping that I'm aware of, no. I mean, you could potentially store RVs in the general industrial zone, but not camp there.
But my concern is that, I mean, a properly built and maintained RV park is an attraction, even in private ownership. And so, if we're going to allow it for the city, we should probably allow it for the public in the appropriate area as well as part of that zoning change.
Yeah. I think it's a unique zone in that regard because it's only for city-owned.
Right, yeah, and that's my, yeah, that's my concern, is that we're sort of monopolizing that.
Monopolizing it.
And out of all the services the city provides, that's about the only one that can really be also privately provided, so I'd like to see the private sector have the opportunity to provide that as well.
Okay.
Any other follow-up questions for staff? All right, we'll move on to the applicant. And for the record, please state your name, city of residence, and your role here, and you've got 15 minutes.
My name is Brian Martin, project manager with Langohansen Landscape Architects.
Kendall Reed, Parks and Recreation Director, Oregon City.
Jonathan Waverly, Parks and Cemetery Maintenance Manager.
And for having us this evening, we're very excited to be presenting the master plan to you. And I think Pete did a great job presenting the master plan as it is right now, based on the, seeing it through the lens of code compliance and the planning department. And I just wanted to speak briefly to the project through the lens of the public process and engagement and where we started, kind of the why, and then how we got to where we're at today. I think there was a question earlier on as to the impetus of this master planning process, and what Pete said is true, that it's a well-loved park that is historic and used for many different purposes, as listed in all the amenities. And at this point, there have been a number of planning studies over the past up to five or 10 years, looking at specific amenities within the park, the boat ramp as seen here. Go to the next slide. And the, oh. Also, the RV park in its current location, down, most of it within the one-year floodplain, some of it in the two-year floodplain, but basically the majority of it being inundated every year and the costs associated with electrical repairs that are almost guaranteed every year. So, just looking at, instead of just piece by piece piecemealing the improvements, kind of taking a step back and looking at this gem of a park as a whole and developing a master plan that would guide the redevelopment of this central park in Oregon City. I think one thing that we are, I guess I'd say we're proud about at this point is just the very robust public engagement process, starting at the very end of 2021, culminating in a whole series of public open houses in March, April, and June of last year, that were both in-person and virtual, presenting, first open house, just general ideas, this map right here, just showing people what exists, reminding people what exists on the site, kind of starting to get from the public what they would envision for the future flavor of the park, how they use it today, how it could be used in the future, you know, real design options at that point. And I guess just going through quickly the public, there was the three open houses that I spoke about, followed by two public surveys with over 500 respondents to each of the surveys. There were presentations that we gave at several PRAK meetings to keep them abreast of the development of the project. A number of stakeholder interviews for the city commissioners, the economic development, the tribes, public agencies, anybody that, the sheriff, anybody with a particular interest or involvement with this park, to be able to get really good information from them on the existing uses and how it could be improved as well. I'll just go through quickly the three site plan options that came out of that first public open house. We, when going to the second public open house, presented the public with three different directions to take the overall redevelopment of Clackamas Park. Kind of providing a variety of amenities on the site for them to give feedback to and help them envision where the park could go into the future. This site plan option number one keeps, kept Main Street and Clackamas Drive in their current alignment. You'll see the curve there as they connect. This one did relocate the RV and some overflow parking into that city-owned lot across the street, which is about two and a quarter acres for reference. It kept some of the existing parking in a similar alignment with the addition of the east-west bar that heads towards the Willamette River to add new parking opportunities there, a new expanded play area to the north of the skate park there, kept the existing boat launch in place and for non-motorized access, and then provided the new motorized boat launch 350 feet down the Clackamas River. And just a point of context about that location, which is, you'll see is similar in all of the options and in the final master plan, that was the location recommended by hydrologic engineers after a pretty detailed study of looking at rebuilding in its current location, moving it approximately 200 feet, and then this location of 350 feet, that was the most sustainable, long-term solution in terms of where the Clackamas River is, the impacts of the water on the proposed boat launch location, that was the best location. And option number two, quickly, providing a large bank of parking right off of the newly-aligned Main Street and Clackamas Drive there, essentially locating the play area that was much more favorable to the public, bringing that into the center of the park as opposed to near, proximate to the skate park, providing in orange, a couple of large public plaza spaces, again, keeping the existing boat launch for non-motorized boat launch, and then proposing the new boat launch at that 350 feet downstream location, really looking at reimagining the pedestrian circulation throughout the park. Number 10 is a boardwalk that goes over a depression in the park, perceived as favorable by the public, but then as we got into a little bit more details, speaking with the public agencies, and those familiar with the hydrology of the river, it really became more of a maintenance issue just as a debris collection, so that we moved away from that in the end. And then looking at option three quickly, this really looked at reimagining almost the entire layout of the park, redirecting the street alignment into a T-intersection, then just creating a more serpentine parking lot layout, removing the existing boat launch but providing access down to the river for human-powered vehicles, not providing a boat launch, for motorized boat launch in the park itself, a number of support courts there near McLaughlin, and also providing all of the RV off-site. So, from this, as we presented these to the public in person and they were hosted on the city's website, we solicited feedback from people through a public survey and also at the end of our public presentation. So, just a couple, real briefly, some of the survey questions dealing with key elements within the park, keeping the existing boat launch in its place for different imagining uses, looking at public gathering spaces, how were those seen, asking the public about where the RV park should be relocated or if it should be relocated at all, and then the new location for the boat ramp. And these are just really important to get as much feedback as possible as we moved forward, so that we weren't doing this redesign effort in a vacuum, but really reaching out to the community, users of all types, and getting their input going forward. So, this is the final master plan that Pete had already described, just touching briefly again to echo what was said, the realignment of Main Street and Clackamas Drive, bringing it into a T-intersection there, a three-way stop to really slow down traffic as it enters the park, providing, reorganizing the parking lot right off the main entry there, and then making a much more efficient layout of the boat trailer parking at the top of the existing human-powered launch there. So, keeping the existing launch in place but closing it to motorized vehicles, but more of a place for launching canoes, kayaks, and that type of vehicle, providing the new boat launch in that 350 feet downstream location, really look at reorganizing the onsite pedestrian circulation and having a real purposeful series of loops, and then essentially located play area. I'll zoom through a couple of slides that kind of focus in on different...
Excuse me, Brian, I'm sorry to interrupt. Before you go on, I think Commissioner LaSalle had a question on that slide with, see the little areas with like the red dots?
I'll highlight that in a couple of slides.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, this just touches on the entryway and the parking lot there, as Pete mentioned, increasing both the opportunity for boat trailer parking by about 15 spaces and then the automobile parking by, I think it was about 20 spaces, just to accommodate the proposed uses in the park. And this speaks to both of the pedestrian network within the park and also the public plaza spaces and the larger blocks adjacent to the playground, adjacent to the sport courts, at the top of the bank near the existing boat launch, just public gathering spaces. This, these are those dots, these are locations that we identified for public art or interpretive signage, so kind of key gathering spaces. And then this has been spoken about a number of times, this is a slide that speaks to all the areas in the bright green are opportunities or prime opportunities for mitigation. As has been mentioned, this, the entire park is within the N-Rod zone, so there's a lot of, anytime we make an impact, there is a mitigation planting effort that takes place. So, this shows up to eight acres of mitigation, basically down from the high water line all the way up to the higher elevations within the park, and really being careful to select the appropriate plants, those that go for full inundation down closer to the river and those that are more of an upland species as you move to the east. And just to speak briefly, maintaining the healthy trees that are on site and then replanting with native trees, any trees that we have to be, that had to be removed for safety reasons. Touching quickly on the proposed sport court, not identifying specifically the use, showing, striking here... striking here for basketball, could be any number of other events in that space, and expanding this skate park, a little less than twice the size of the existing skate Play area centrally located based on the feedback that we received, a safety buffer between the parking lot and the play area itself, this public open space, the play area being mounted to lessen the impacts of flooding, and the restroom just on the upper-left side of that image, one of those rectangles, receiving upgrades as needed. The boat launch, as we've highlighted, being moved 350 feet downstream, not shown in the picture on the right, but there being a central float, so boats could launch on both the east and the west side of that float. This being the open lawn space near the river, a central lawn for events, for picnicking, for just enjoying the prime access views to the Willamette itself. And the RV park, 18 spaces, spread out a little bit from the alignment currently in the park, allowing for more landscape between the spaces themselves and amenities, this is fully full hookups for sanitary and electrical, and much farther out of the floodplain zone, minimizing impacts. Once again, just looking at the master plan. And wanted to open up for questions.
All right, thank you. For questions, we'll go the opposite order this time, Commissioner Espy.
Oh gosh, yeah, you guys have done a great job, and I'm assuming from your presentation, you guys have landed on an option for the park, is that correct?
Yeah, so that would be this one here, the kind of culmination of the other three.
Yeah. So the only thing that I really would think of is, maybe two things, is to consider a heritage trail for those waypoints that are there, so that it gives people, you know, a real-time interpretation of the park, they can include QR codes where you can, you know, put your phone up and listen to, you know, what, you know, the park's history, because a lot of people, a lot of tourism, a lot of people that don't know the history of that park, and you could have a really good opportunity of, you know, for diversity, equity, inclusion, and including, you know, something for the tribes, and then also Oregon City history, kind of intermingled in that. The other thing too, I would, I would hope that we would see some kind of space defining art sculpture there, some kind of destination, something that say, oh, we should go, and I know that's lots of money, but maybe in the future, Oregon City could consider going there and, you know, I went to Chicago and, you know, you go to Millian Park, you see the Bean, or if you're inspired by that, I'm not saying, you know, put something like that there, but maybe something that is space defining for Oregon City that, because I think there really is a good opportunity in that park to do something like that. Of course, it'd have to be, you know, withstand flooding and all that other kind of stuff, but I think that somebody, you know, some sort of creative industrial artist could come up with something pretty cool. That's all I've got.
Mr. Lawson.
Commissioner Espy has said about the art, what I get concerned about a little bit, if it does really flood, it's going to take the art with them unless it's really in the ground, because there's a lot of current when we have a flood. With the grassy areas, I'm concerned about pesticides and herbicides, and I am curious about how much more this will cost our Parks Department in maintaining this park, and I think that's something we need to entertain for them as well, because there's already been a burden on our parks. And then that's pretty much it for me.
All right, Vice Chair Schloggenaufer.
Yeah, I do have one. We keep looking at boat ramps on the Clackamas River, and I don't know if we've ever talked about putting a boat ramp on the Willamette River. I'm sure there's a reason why we don't, but I think when the Clackamas Cove used to be used more to use to dredge the river, but now the rocks to kind of move around with every storm and, you know, one year the channel is pretty decent, and then the next year, we've got these crazy currents going by the ramp and it's not even usable. The Willamette doesn't seem to be quite as bad, so that was my question, has any thought been put into trying to find a spot on the Willamette?
They, I'll try and give a short answer. They did look at providing a boat ramp, not on the Clackamas, but on the Willamette instead of the one that exists today, and actually historically, there was one back in the late 60s, that's where the asphalt road leads led down to, and it was washed out the first winter. It's actually, the currents of the Willamette as it comes around the corner are really strong, and there's a significant hole right there in the river, under the riverbed, or within the riverbed itself, so I don't want to speak as a hydrologic expert, but it was looked at and there were some significant challenges to putting in that spot, because that was our thought too, is that made a lot of sense to locate it there on the Willamette based on, seems like it's going a lot slower, seems like it's an easy access point, but the experts told us otherwise.
And we don't want to spend too much money on something, I mean, there could be a jetty build or some kind of a bar or some kind of protection, Meldrum Bar has a good protection, but then again, that thing also gets shallow, so then you go into dredging and then what kind of maintenance is required to try to keep that thing functional, so I'm just hoping that the one on the Clackamas is going to have a little more success than we've had in the past, because I know it's been challenging.
Chair Stoll, I have just a quick point to make. I understand there are concerns about cost and maintenance, but those are not germane to the approval criteria for a general development plan.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Commissioner LaSalle.
You've all done a great job of presenting a really, really nice park. It looks like, you know, you've considered use for the largest portion of the public. However, I hesitate going any further until we find out, have some idea of the cost of this huge project and possible funding sources.
Any response to that question? I have a follow-up, I have a similar question myself, so.
So we're very aware of costs associated with developing the park. Our goal is to utilize this master plan once it's approved, go out for grants and funding. So this is, this is a huge piece for us, and access some additional grants and funds. In the past three years, we've built several parks where we've been able to go out for grants to offset some of those costs, and we needed those master plans in order to get access to that funding. The other thing we're looking at is, we're working on our Parks Master Plan, we're updating our CIP Plan, and we're trying to tie in projects that could be SDC-eligible as a way to offset some of the costs associated with park development as well, so we're going to exhaust every option in regards to looking for funding. And on the note of maintenance costs, my Parks Manager has been extremely involved in the process of developing this plan to provide input on maintenance and different things that we can do to mitigate maintenance costs. As Brian brought up, with the RV park being in the floodplain, they're having to go in frequently throughout the year to disconnect units, to close the park down, and that takes up a lot of time, that takes up a lot of money as well. Our goal is to build sustainable parks, and we believe that this plan will allow us to do that.
Commissioner Lawson.
A little quick here, we were talking about sustainability, obviously that grassy area, if we can get more native plants there, it will, I've noticed, you know, I've milner grass, for instance, and the more it grows, the more it fills in and evasives or, you know, weeds that you have to usually spray, don't get in there, because it takes over because it's native. So if we can really look at some like native ground cover, that'd be awesome, and it's very durable, there's some really great options, so I'd love to consider that as well in the future.
All right. Couple of questions, so you already kind of answered it, but this plan is more of a, you need a plan before you can go for the grants type of situation, do you have any funding in the next year or two for some phase, some portion of this already in the budget, or is this purely a, we need to go out and find the money?
Actually, we are going to be using some of the funding that we're already receiving for our West Good Neighbor Agreement, and because of the location of the park, we're going to leverage that funding to kick off, hopefully, the first phase of this park to get that ball rolling. We know that the boat ramp project is going to take a large amount of time, and that's going to be a priority for us to start having those conversations with the Oregon State Marine Board, to see if they're willing to support us with funding as well, so we can get that process started, and then, like I said, utilizing this plan to look at additional funding for the two other phases, the RV park and then the further development of the park moving forward.
In the plan and the text, it mentioned relocating the horseshoe pit, but that's not on the plat for the new park, where would the horseshoe pit go and would it be of similar size or, well, similar size, similar numbers of pits?
Based on the feedback that we got, we did public engagement for over a year, and we never received a comment in regards from the community that this was something that they wanted us to pursue in this development, and that was the only reason why it wasn't incorporated into this design.
But in the text of your submittal, I believe it said that, or maybe it was in the staff report, there's text saying that it will be relocated, but it's not on the plat.
That's an error on my part.
Oh, okay, well, there you go. All right. Looking at Google Earth right now, it looks like there's some kind of ad hoc trails from McLaughlin down to Main Street on each side of the overpass, is there any plan to make an actual connection, sidewalk connection, from McLaughlin down to Main Street?
Not knowing what you're looking at, I can't, so you're talking about, yeah, here's...
Path down.
Yeah. That would be a steep slope?
Yeah, but stairs, I mean, is there any plan to connect, to make a pedestrian connection between Main Street and McLaughlin, or to, between the park and the RV park and McLaughlin?
We don't have any plans for that at this time.
And then the RV site itself, it's, it's, has probably a 10 or 12-foot elevation change, I think, from the, from the Clackamas edge to the middle of, to the lowest point, is that going to be brought up or cut and filled down to be leveled, or how's that going to, I mean, obviously there has to be balanced cut and fill for the whole site, but...
You're referring to the current RV site?
No, to the new RV site.
The new?
It's not flat.
Yeah, the new RV site, or where the RV park would move to is, the back section is fairly steep.
Okay.
But as you move out, that's all flat, that's our overflow parking lot there.
And I think the steepest part is actually ODOT property there.
Is actually the one, I'm sorry.
ODOT property.
Oh.
For 99 there.
Okay. All right, yeah, that's all I have for questions. Any follow-up questions from any of the other commissioners? Mr. Lawson.
One thing too as well is, obviously, we have a large homeless population, and this is going to improve where, you know, I've seen more of it, is there a plan to try to, obviously, it's Enrod, so it's like an area that's, we want to protect, and then obviously there's a lot of, I don't mean to sound, there's a lot of problems in terms of debris, are we looking into that at all as well? Like, obviously, the state allows a certain amount of time where someone can camp, but is there any protection because it's an Enrod area?
The Enrod Code doesn't have any kind of protections like that, it's primarily geared towards habitat, yeah.
All right, any other follow-up questions? Vice Chair Schloggenaufer.
Okay, if something just came to mind, like an RV park, we may not be, or the citizens of Oregon City may not be the people that stay in the RV park, it's an attraction. And I was thinking, when you brought up the horseshoe pit, it may not be that people from Oregon City use the horseshoe pit, but it could be something that brings people to the park from outside the area for tournaments?
Yeah, no, we, yeah, we host horseshoe tournaments there.
Okay, all right. Are they not a big enough?
I think Kendall answered the question with the, with our...
The community didn't say it was important, but what about the horseshoe community? Did we ask them?
Well, we opened it up to everyone in regards to feedback, so no one was limiting in the horseshoe community from commenting on what they'd like to see. What we've seen is that, obviously, in the very beginning, when that horseshoe pit was installed, it was trending up and used quite a bit, but over time, we've seen a drop in use, and so based on the feedback that we received is the reason why it was not incorporated in the plan. So we tried to take all the feedback that we received and the different uses and what people wanted to see and try to incorporate that in the plan, it's not something that, we don't have anything against horseshoe pits, it was just the feedback we got from the community, this is what they wanted to see.
Okay, all right, Arthur, thank you.
All right, I would like to see the horseshoe pit still there because of the fact, I have a neighbor who does horseshoes, it's pretty loud, you know, like it'd be really nice to have it in a park and, you know, have it there, because it's a great, a lot of parks don't have horseshoe, you have to go buy the kit, so it'd be really awesome to have it, it'd be quite a niche.
All right, one other question that I forgot to ask, regarding the RV dump station, what was the logic behind deleting the public dump station?
We originally relocated it to the RV park, but when we brought it back to the city commission and PRAC, we were directed that they wanted it removed and to consider an alternative location for the dump station once we start development of the park, so we are still having conversations about what would be a suitable relocation area for the dump station, but because the RV park is inclusive and has all the hookups, there wasn't a need to have that located in that particular area.
And if you've been down there on a busy weekend, the traffic's backed up, clear to Dunes Drive.
Yeah.
It's not an ideal situation, and so, yeah, hopefully, we would be able to...
Would the relocation would be to a different park or a different location within the city?
That would be our goal, so.
Yeah, I'd like to see that too. Commissioner LaSalle.
Have you considered a new location on the other side of Highway 99 for that dump site?
That's not park property, so...
Well, I don't care if it's dump park property or not, it's an area that could be pursued with the proper permission from whoever owns, I would not limit your search to park property only. Be doing yourself a disservice there.
Yeah, Vice Chair Schloggenaufer.
Okay, I don't know who this question is for, but what would the proper zoning be for a dump station? Where can you put it?
By what? You could potentially put one in a sewer plant.
A couple nearby.
There's one up the road, but I don't think there's been any conversations with that, it's a general industrial zone over there.
With adequate sewer capacity?
And obviously, there's a traffic impact associated with the dumps, with the RV dump, so that would have to be taken into account.
All right. All right, any other follow-up questions? All right, thank you for coming up. Are there any representatives of a recognized neighborhood association, government agency, or other incorporated public interest organization? Oh, all right, move on to public comments. We'll start off with Ken Gilbert, who I believe is online, and Mr. Gilbert, if you would state your name, city of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Ken Gilbert, my city of residence is Holsley, Oregon. Thank you, planning commissioner, for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. As I said, my name's Ken Gilbert, I am the president of the Oregon Horseshoe Pitchers Association. Horseshoes in Oregon as an organized sport started in the early 1900s, of course, as recreational pastime, it started much earlier than that. The history of organized horseshoes in Oregon is deeply connected with Oregon City. For example, we are celebrating our 100th year state tournament this year, and as you may have guessed, the very first state tournament... may have guessed, the very first state tournament in Oregon was in Oregon City. There have been great champions and top world competitors that have been a part of the Oregon City Club. A few of those names are Ted Allen, Walter Ray Williams, Jr., who's also a famous professional bowler, and Ben Wiedrich, longtime Oregon City resident and multiple state champion and top-level fierce competitor at the World Tournament. Of course, those are the famous names. There have been hundreds of other people through the years that have been a part of the Oregon City Horseshoe Club and thousands from the state charter who have played at the Oregon City tournaments. The Oregon City horseshoe pits at Clackmit Park, Clackmit Park, are the biggest set of courts in Oregon. As such, we are able to draw people to tournaments from Idaho and Washington regularly. As you know, when they come to town to play in the tournaments, they are also coming with their money and renting hotel rooms, eating out at restaurants, and enjoying other entertainment venues. My family and I spend approximately $500 every time we attended a tournament in Oregon City, which is every time they host one, we go. We're just one family. There are several others who do the same. In addition, the Oregon City Club president is working with the host club in Washington to have the Pacific Northwest Tournament held in Oregon City. That will draw more people to your city who will want to spend their money. If we think even bigger than that, the World Tournament is potentially being held in the Tri-Cities area in 2024. Being that close to Oregon will generate more people's interest in joining the club and increasing numbers for the club. If the 2024 World Tournament is a success with numbers, we would start thinking about hosting the World Tournament in Oregon three to four years later. Our city that we would like to do that in is Oregon City. That brings approximately 1,000 competitors and additional numbers of family members to the area. They would be renting large indoor facility to host the event, bringing even more money to the area. However, we would need the Oregon City outdoor courts available for people to practice on. We're not asking to get rid of anything in your plans for the park. We're just hoping to talk further about how the skate park could be arranged to still save the horseshoe courts. Even if we were able to keep the eight courts that are under the shelter and four additional courts outside of the shelter, we would have enough to continue hosting tournaments in your city. We support the expansion and updated plans of your beautiful park. We'd just like to see how we can meet the needs of your goals as well as keep an option for the current usage of the horseshoe pits. The other thing I've heard a few people mention is about interest in people responding to the surveys. We did have a changeover right toward the end of the pandemic in our leadership at the Oregon City Courts, and when the park shut down, it did take a hit on our numbers. However, that club is increasing in numbers, and the tournament director for the Oregon City Horseshoe Club would love to add additional tournaments during the year to bring even more people in more often to Oregon City. Thank you for your time, and we appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Next, I have Brian Martin, but were you wishing to testify additionally as a private subject? Jerry Herman, what's up next?
My name is Jerry Herman. Good to be here tonight. You should all have a handout like this one-page summary, which summarizes the comments of the Oregon City Park Alliance, which is about 10 people strong. Businesspeople, people from the Citizen Involvement Committee and many other committees that you have as advisory committees, we're here to support parks, and we were here to support the budget process that would give, we hope, new support for park positions, which did happen. We support this plan, this master plan, for several reasons. One, this plan links together the entire waterfront, more or less, clear on up to the Ammonathie Bridge. What do I mean by that? John Storm Park is just upriver from Clackmit Park, and Clackmit Park swings downriver to the confluence of the Clackamas. And it's the first time that I've ever seen in the four decades I've been involved with Oregon City or more, that all this area's been kind of linked together in passive and active recreation. It's really a nice approach they've taken. What are some of the new changes? One, the RV park, which used to flood every other year at elevation 25, which is the ordinary high water line that the river comes to almost every year, gets moved to higher ground and out of the flood plain and out of the, basically, observational area and more or less nested in its own area where a great nature scape can be put into place to soften its look, too, and make it more a part of the park. Another thing that happens in this whole thing, and this was an effort that I worked hard on, was with the landscape architects, Lang O'Hanson, I believe they were here tonight, representative, we worked with them and Kendall Reed to establish the idea, if there's monies besides Oregon City citizen dollars, can we access them with what are called lower harbor trust fund dollars, like Gladstone has, like Lake Oswego has, like Milwaukee is doing now? They're mitigation funds where people pay into a pollution abatement fund in Portland Harbor, but they don't want to have all their land sewed up in a way they can't use it, Arco, Port of Portland, et cetera. So they're willing to come upriver and be a partner on other properties. Well, your good staff here worked together with Lang O'Hanson to identify eight acres worth about $1 million per acre. That's what that's worth, about $1 million an acre of support money from the Lower Harbor Trust Fund. There's a process we have to go through to make that happen. That was going to happen in Clackmit Cove, but the city broke down in that process, and I'm not sure that's ever going to happen. It really needed to happen in Clackmit Cove. But Clackmit Park with the Clackamas River and the Lammer River together is a perfect place to include people and wildlife, trails, interpretation, passive and active recreation, and so forth. So we're here, basically, and I'm here in behalf of Rivers Life Center, my nonprofit, to show our support for this plan. And by the way, I do want to mention Brian Shaw, some of you know Brian, he was a part of your planning mission many years ago in city commission and urban renewal commission, did some initial design work, I'm going to say four years ago, to try to get people thinking about what the park could look like, including the placement of the boat ramp. The boat ramp is a hot potato. What do you do about the boat ramp? And I support the boat ramp. The question is, where do you put it with the least effects on dividing the park and so forth? I would suggest, and I know these folks know this right now, the Marine Board, I believe, wants to get a hydrologist involved, somebody to study the water and what it moves. 10 years ago, they had somebody involved, and the river was busy placing gravels below the 1990 bridge. Why was that? Because a large revetment of steel had collapsed off of Meldrum Bar Park and was not letting the gravel move down naturally to Meldrum Bar. So the bar, by the way, was going away. Meldrum Bar, where people love to fish and park and so forth, was going away, reduced by 50%. That revetment, under the Lower Harbor Trust Fund, cost about $1 million and a half dollars to remove properly and then revegetate the slopes. That was all done with outside money to support City Gladstone, and now the gravel's moving again. I guess what we're suggesting, I'm suggesting in particular, that perhaps a new hydrologic study would show, well, that gravel's moving again. Maybe we can look at a slightly different positioning idea for that boat ramp. But we're here to support your parks and Clackmit, which is a regional park. There's nothing like it in Portland. The only thing even comes close is Cathedral Park, really. Tom McCall Park, yes, but seawalls and everything else, it's not the same. Go up to Salem, nothing until you get to Salem. This park is really important as an asset to this region. So thanks for hearing me. If you have any questions, be glad to answer them.
All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you. And last, we have William Gifford.
My name is William Gifford. I live in Oregon City. Five quick points. One, possibly in the order of importance. On the application, it shows the applicant as Brian's name. It's not the city, and it's not the Parks Department, but they are the applicant. I thought that was interesting that it doesn't show representing Oregon City. The owner of the property is shown as Kendall Reed, not Kendall Reed for Oregon City. I just thought that was an interesting technical aspect of it. The applicant mentioned that in all the town hall meetings and the other outreach, that they reached out to economic organizations. I am a longtime member of the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce. I am a founding director for the Oregon City Business Alliance. I don't ever remember that a presentation was made or input was solicited from those organizations. I may be wrong. I like very much Commissioner LaSalle's comments about crosswalks. I think that that is an important piece of the planning that he's done. I like very much Commissioner Espy's comments about trails, especially with the city going through what it's going through right now regarding networks of trails. I hope that this park will be considered as part of that network. One thing that was not mentioned, and I hope that people just don't close their mind, is the possibility of pull-through RV sites. Some of the bigger RVs, it's a little difficult for them to, I mean, they can do it to back in, but if that could be looked at to consider pull-through RV sites. You've got to be careful about the flow of the traffic and so on, but I think it would be a big plus. The economics of the dump station, I think, cannot be underemphasized. I hope that the city, I mean, that that would be a condition of this approval, that there must be dump site facility located somewhere in Oregon City, hopefully proximal to this location. But anybody who's ever gone camping realizes how important that is, and it could be a moneymaker. There's no question about that, that people need to dump, and they're willing to pay to do it. Jonathan was talking about the queue of cars. Yeah, people have to dump their shit. I'm sorry. But, and they're willing to pay for it. And that's, that could be money to help work towards the maintenance of these facilities as well. And last but not least, Mr. Gilbert's comments about the horseshoe facility is spot on. That's great activity for youth and for families, and I would really support keeping the horseshoe facilities. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And last, we have the applicants back up to rebut any of the testimony and answer any further questions. If they'll come back up and we'll. And this time is basically so that you can address any of the testimony that we've heard over the last three folks and then answer any other questions that we might have afterwards. And you've got five minutes for the rebuttal.
Just one thing I wanted to highlight. I know there was some conversation around managing the park and managing the safety of the park. That's something that we're already looking into and addressing. We currently have a security patrol that actually is, that park is part of their route to help reduce the amount of activity that we have at the park, whether it be with transient or vandalism. And that's something that we're going to continue, and we've seen some impacts already with having the security patrol be at some of these high-traffic parks. The other thing that we hope to do with this master plan is to activate the park. The more people you have around, the less incidents you'll have with the vandalism and the homeless. So just wanted to address those two questions in regards to security and safety.
Yeah, I want to say that we appreciate the comments that we received about the horseshoes. Glad that they were.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Definitely something that we can look at in the plan.
Okay. All right. Any of the commissioners have questions, follow-up questions for the applicant? All right. All right. Shouldn't hit that. All right, thank you. So at this point, we will close the public, no, keep everything open. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to.
I think you've got, you need a motion for a continuance to the date certain of July 10.
Okay, can we have discussion now, is that?
Yes, absolutely. Discussion now, but don't close the record. We'll leave it open so that when staff comes back, if they need new evidence or if the applicant needs new evidence, you'll have an opportunity to do that, and then you'll close the public hearing and make a decision based on the revised staff report that Pete's going to put in the record before the 10th.
Got it, okay. All right, thank you. Yeah, discussion, thoughts?
So can we provide any direction for staff, or are we just strictly doing a continuance? I'm just chatting about it first.
Whatever the planning commission would prefer. I mean, you've already sort of given some thoughts. If you have further thoughts, I mean, staff would be happy to hear them, or you can hold them until deliberation, whatever you would prefer.
If there was a consensus that the commission thought that horseshoe, for example, horseshoe pits were still worth considering, could we ask for that to be?
I question what criteria that would relate to. What criteria would you tie that obligation to? I mean, I think that the, if the Parks Department decides to propose horseshoes because they've decided that there's room for it, they can do that, but I'm not sure that the planning commission can mandate horseshoes unless there's some criteria in 1765 that talks about allocating particular activities.
What about, what about the question of, could we make a condition of approv, well, we're not making any approvals, but could we make that the alternate dump site needs to be identified before we could approve the general development?
Again, my question would be back to you would be, what criteria would require the provision of a dump site? Seems like a, seems like a policy question, more so than related to any of the general design plan criteria. I'm open to you exercising discretion with respect to the criteria, but I'm, I, we, I would need to dig into that further in order to say, yes, you absolutely could mandate the provision of a dump site somewhere in the city before this park opens.
Yeah, we would probably need some legal help with making that kind of suggestion.
I'm happy to look into it over this continuance period.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I've been noodling on it, too, and I've got a few ideas, but I'd want to talk about them with Carrie before I voice them here, but I will certainly be paying attention to that.
Carrie, is it possible to have a list of policy items to forward to council for their consideration? That within the realm?
If this decision, if the general development plan does not get appealed, will it go to the city commission? This is a recommendation, then, I don't think the planning commission's decision is a recommendation.
Okay.
So I think you could, you could make some, you could make some policy recommendations to the city commission generally, but it wouldn't be attached to this general development plan. Does that make sense? Because this general development plan won't go to the city commission unless it's appealed.
Okay, I thought there was still a feedback loop.
No.
Between us and them.
I don't, I mean, not unless there's an appeal.
That's fine.
Mr. LaSalle?
I hesitate to approve something like this without some kind of a ballpark financial figure. I don't care if it's extremely accurate, but give us some idea of what we're looking to have to pay for, and then your plans for funding. Mr. Herman brought up some possibilities for funding. Mr. Herman brought up some possibilities for funding. But I just feel nervous about giving somebody a bank check like that.
Commissioner LaSalle, I appreciate that you're concerned about the fiscal impact of these improvements. But again, I have to remind you that the question of whether or not it's a good idea to spend taxpayer money to improve the park is a, is a policy decision that it doesn't have anything to do with these criteria. And I think the Planning Commission is charged with evaluating the criteria in 1765 and nothing else. And so with all due respect, I'm a little worried about digging further into how the city will fund this or voting because whether or not the city can afford to fund it or whether that's a good idea. That is beyond the scope of the review before the Planning Commission right now.
So if I were to restate that for clarification, we need to treat the Parks Department as if they were any other applicant who may or may not be able to get funding for the project that's before us.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
I wanted to ask about the signage, that there's going to be signage at the park. Is there more information we can get on that on the 10th in terms of what that would look like? Because if we're definitely keeping like horseshoes, it'd be fun to have a history sign on the significance of horseshoe in Oregon City. And then also, you know, obviously the plants and other things. I'm kind of curious of what the signage would look like, just, just because it would be interesting. I would love to see that.
All right, any other discussion? Okay. Will we continue to July?
10th.
7th? 10th. 10th.
10th.
Yeah, thanks.
I second.
All right, motions have been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Aye.
Oh, I haven't, we haven't called the, well, yeah, I was asking for discussion. No worries. All right, call the vote, please.
Commissioner LaSalle?
Aye.
Commissioner Laws?
Aye.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Vice Chair Schlagenhoffer?
Aye.
Chair Stoll?
Aye.
All right, we will continue it to the July 10th meeting. The record and the hearing open. Right, moving on to communications.
The only thing I have for communications is that we will now have a July 10th meeting.
Good. Could you speak to the, oh, the historical preservation education event in August? We have received an email about that.
Yeah, sure.
I shouldn't have put you on, I should have asked you earlier, but I didn't think of it till now.
So there's a national organization, which I'm forgetting the name of. But our grant that we get through the state, because we're a certified local government, we get grant funding through the State Historic Preservation Office, and we can use that funding to pay for training. And so this training opportunity is put on by this national organization, and they will come to Oregon City. And they're going to bring trainers from, who are other historic preservation planners from, I think, the city of Denver, maybe it's Nashville and Charleston.
Yeah.
Which there's several of. So I think we're talking about South Carolina, Charleston. But anyway, I believe it's South Carolina, Charleston and South Carolina. And they will come and present a list of different topics and ranging from kind of the importance of historic preservation and how it started and the legal precedent behind it to some more specific things that HRB deals with, which is like solar panels. And how do we look at kind of, you know, new technologies and new building types and new building technologies in the context of historic preservation? And another piece of that, I think, that will be really appropriate and poignant for us is infill. How do we look at infill in our historic areas? So I think there was a certain number of spots open about, I'm going to say, in the 30-ish range. And so we wanted to open it up to, you know, not just our historic review board members, but kind of anyone in the community who is interested. And then we're also going to open it up to neighboring communities as well. And right now, that's scheduled for August 11th, I believe, which is a Friday. It's basically all day, and then we'll provide lunch as well, so.
There are a quorum problem with more than three of us attending that.
Well, we are going to notice it.
Okay.
We need to notice it anyway because it's, presumably, all of the historic review board members will be there. So it will be publicly noticed. You won't be making any decisions. You won't be hearing any cases, anything like that. It's purely training, so.
All right.
I don't know. I need to ask that. I think we asked that question of the trainers, and I don't know. I think they had to look into it, actually, if it was going to be recorded, so.
It's the National Alliance of Preservation Commissions, an APC.
Thank you.
And the event's called the Camp: Commission Assistance and Mentoring Program. Acronym alert.
All right, thank you.
Can I mention one other event? And that is July 25th, the Volunteer Appreciation Night. And since you all spend a lot of time volunteering, I hope that you will go and eat some food and mingle with your other volunteers. And I will not be there because it's the same night as a historic review board meeting. So you won't see your fellow HRB members there.
All right, any other communications? Anyone else? All right, we're adjourned.